Hi, Chair Cruz.
Hi there, how are you?
Just fine, nice to see you.
Good to see you.
I can wish you some my Wesley.
Thank you.
Mr. Alvarez, are we, can we hear your audio again, please?
Test, test, one, two, three.
Oh, much better.
Thank you.
I think we might all be here.
Yeah, Chair Cruz, I think we're good to go, ready when you are.
Okay, great. All right, well, good to see everyone by Zoom. The February fourteen twenty twenty four Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now convened. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Slick?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Mr. Stoudamire Wesley?
Here.
Chair Myers? Chair Cruz?
Here. Thank you. All right, I have a brief notice to read. As required by state law, Prosper Portland has provided an opportunity for the public to access and attend this meeting in person. There's also YouTube livestream video of the meeting, and the public has had the opportunity to arrange in advance to provide virtual testimony. At this time, the public may provide written testimony to the commission by emailing prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Again, prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Okay, so first item, Commissioner Reports, does anybody have anything they'd like to report this time around? Nope, okay, all right then, and Commissioner Myers is gone, he's on vacation, so we'll get his report next month. All right, Executive Director Report. Executive Director Branham is out ill today, so Lisa Abouath is joining us in her stead, welcome Lisa.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I am here on behalf of Kimberly because she's out sick. I'm excited to hear the report when Commissioner Myers is back and provides us an update on his vacation. But I wanted to go through kind of a number of announcements regarding events and some of the work that staff has been undertaking over the past month or so. So first and foremost, February is Black History Month, and we're encouraging everyone to get out to explore, to support our local small businesses or events or festivals around the city this month and every month. Some of the many resources that are available, if folks are looking for for some ideas, is prosperportland.us/beyondblackhistorymonth has a number of resources. There's also travelportland.com as well as oregonblackpioneers.org that provides a lot of good historical information regarding Oregon. Next, it is also the Lunar New Year, and it's the Year of the Dragon, and those celebrations are now in full swing. So we wanted to mention two of the many events that are happening throughout Portland. First, Lansu Chinese Garden is hosting their Lantern Viewing Evenings at the Garden. The event is running nightly now through Saturday, March second, and for more information, you can go to lansugarden.org. Second, the Portland Chinatown History Foundation in Old Town is celebrating its tenth anniversary, and their annual Dragon Dance Parade will be on Saturday, February seventeenth, which will usher in the Year of the Dragon. The Pochimoo Dragon, Lion Dancers, Drummers and Banners will lead a parade through Old Town. And for more information on that event, you can go to portlandchinatownmuseum.org. Moving on to some of the work that staff has been undertaking over the past month or so, I'm pleased to share that yesterday Prosper Portland Commissioner Rubio and Mayor Wheeler announced a suite of critical resources to provide support for our small businesses that were most impacted by the January ice storm. First, the Restore Grant Program, which is administered by Prosper Portland, can provide reimbursement resources to small businesses or nonprofits for up to twenty five thousand in eligible expenses that businesses incurred because of the storm. Second, we've been working with the U.S. Small Business Administration, and they've issued a disaster declaration due to the impact of the winter snow and ice storm. This declaration allows small business owners in Multnomah County to apply for disaster assistance loans. SBA advisors will be available to assist with those loan applications. And then finally, advisors from Prosper Portland's Small Business Hub will also be available to help business owners access loans, grants, and other business support programs like technical assistance and workshops. For more information on these resources, please visit prosperportland.us and click on the Winter Storm Relief banner on our website. I want to acknowledge this has been a big lift for a number of staff here at Prosper Portland who worked quickly to create this opportunity. Ellis Bolis Edmonds, Lisa Norwood, Laz Roman Q, Yume Delgado, Robert Smith, Dan Ruon, Shay Flaherty, T. Bettine, and Chabree. And then next, we also wanted to talk a little bit about an exciting opportunity we have in North Northeast. We're seeking expressions of interest from property owners, real estate developers, and private firms or community-based operators interested in establishing one or more cultural business hubs. This is an action that is called for in the North Northeast Action Plan, and we've been closely working with our Leadership Committee to move that work forward. This is an opportunity for like-minded mission and community-focused firms to develop commercial space that serves as a gathering place, offering business opportunities, technical assistance, and access to financial resources for businesses and individuals who have been historically disadvantaged and/or economically excluded in North Northeast. Its offerings will be culturally specific for small businesses owned by African Americans and other people of color to grow and thrive. That request for expressions of interest closes on Friday, February sixteenth, so we encourage folks to put in their statements of interest. For more information, you can go to prosperportland.us, and that work has been led by Charles, Sharon, Lisa Norwood, Yume, and Amy Nagy. And they've been doing some outstanding work, and it's really kind of a reflection of multiple months of work by them together with the Leadership Committee. And with that, I will hand it back to you, Chair.
Great, thank you very much, it's a great, great report. Okay, next up, we have meeting minutes for the January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, and February one twenty twenty four meetings. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes? Please.
If I move?
Great, thank you, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, all right, all those in favor of approving the minutes? You say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Okay, and Pam, do we have anybody signed up for public comment for any items that are not on the agenda?
We do not.
Well, great, thank you. Okay, well, we have a very short agenda today, we just have one action item. This is, this is number, item number nine, excuse me. An action item, adopting Reimagine Oregon Economic Opportunity Investment Fund Grant Program Guidelines. And Chabree Vickers and Vicky Schwafferman will present on this. So, welcome.
Great, good afternoon, Chair Cruz and Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley, Alvarez, and Slick. I'm Chabree Vickers, and I use she/her pronouns, and I serve as the Director of the Equity Policy and Communications Department here. And I am truly honored to be joined by my colleague and Reimagine Oregon Project Manager, Vicky Schwafferman. Today, we bring you the Reimagine Oregon Economic Opportunity Investment Fund Grant Program Guidelines. At the conclusion of our presentation here, we also are joined by Justice Raji, who serves as the Executive Director of the Reimagine Oregon Program. And he will offer some insight from the Steering Committee that he is the liaison for with us. We will go ahead and move to the next slide, please. So, you know, we appreciate the incredible amount of insight and guidance members of our community, the Prosper Portland Board, City Council, the Advanced Portland Advisory Committee, City Implementation Team, and Prosper Portland colleagues put into moving forward the work of Advanced Portland, and see the Reimagine Oregon Economic Opportunity Fund in alignment with those goals spelled out in the strategy. In particular, we call out here Alignment with Objectives Two and Three, which are promoting equitable wealth creation by supporting BIPOC-owned small businesses and entrepreneurs to start and grow businesses through partnerships, capital, and relevant support. And then Objective Three, which fosters a vibrant central city and neighborhood commercial districts with tailored strategies to reimagine and revitalize our commercial centers and corridors as vibrant nodes of employment, small business, entertainment, and cultural amenities. Next slide, Justin. We just want to start with a little bit of background, history, and context. We think it's especially important in this instance, and especially for Reimagine Oregon. Next slide. So we recognize that the history in particular of how this allocation came to be and the community-driven advocacy that has led us to what we bring you today is of extreme significance. And so here, we note just a few of the particular moments that have led us here today. In the fall of twenty twenty, after the murder of George Floyd, after international unrest and community leadership, multiple Black-led organizations and community leaders and community organizers gathered to demand state, regional, county, and city officials work to increase and invest into Black community capacity. A major aspect of that advocacy was to increase economic opportunity for the Black community of Portland and to center Black community recommendations and vision into the design. The Reimagine Oregon Economic Investment Fund is the result of that co-creation and community visioning process. And so here, we call out four particular points in time. Fall of twenty twenty was when City Council originally made the one point nine million dollar allocation of ongoing recreational cannabis tax fund funding. That is the source of this grant, a grant fund. At the same time, they made a one point five million dollar general fund available for the community planning process, and that is what Justice Raji works to lead on behalf of the Reimagine Oregon community. And that's a part of the community engagement work. That is what leads the community engagement work that has gotten us so far today. In fall of twenty one, that, the one point five one million that was unspent moved over from the Office of Civic Life into a special authority grant for community planning purposes. And that special authority grant wasn't actually signed until fall of twenty twenty two. At that time, Justice Raji, working alongside leaders at the Community and Civic Life Department, and in particular, Akil Patterson, moved over a million dollars of some of the unspent dollars into the seed fund grant process because it was already established and had an infrastructure that they knew could get dollars out into community. And at that time, again, CBO, the grant agreement for that one point five million dollar allocation was signed by Reimagine Oregon Leadership and is fiscally held at the Urban Link of Portland. That was truly when Justice and team were able to start work. Of course, as Justice came back after the holiday season, it was signed, I think, December fourteenth of twenty twenty two. Many shifts were happening in City Council, and eventually, we all learned that the Reimagine Oregon allocation would be coming over to Prosper Portland. And so we get to July of last year, where City Council directed the four point eight million of one-time unspent funding to come over to Prosper Portland along with the ongoing recreational cannabis taxed funding and that we could, so that we could launch the Reimagine Oregon Grant Fund in this fiscal year. Next slide. So we wanted to highlight, you know, it's been a few months since this has happened, and we have moved a lot in this, these few months. In particular, we have hired dedicated staff support. So our project manager and Vicky Schwafferman, who will be speaking just after this, and project coordinator Daniel Tay, and Trevor A. Brandon, who serves as the Reimagine Oregon Administrative Coordinator, to launch and administer the Reimagine Oregon Designated Funds. We are so lucky to have them here, they have been stellar and have moved things incredibly quickly. We are so lucky to have them at Prosper Portland. One of the things we also wanted to do was to immediately start getting some of these dollars out to community. And so in partnership with Justice and the Reimagine Oregon Steering Committee, we looked at ways that we could support immediate increased access to economic development programs that were aligned with the community goals that had already been stated through the Reimagine Oregon effort and the engagement that Justice and I did. And so a part of that went towards increasing access to incubator retail space for local small businesses. We brought that grant to you not long ago that helped us increase access at the MISO maker site and have also made small grants available to businesses alongside partner organizations, especially those who are aligned with our IBRN network. MISO has already started that work and already has a lot of folks signed up and interested in that funding. So we are truly grateful and thankful to MISO for their partnership. We are also providing and have provided capacity-building grants to community economic development partners who've been aligned with our community vision. And so these Reimagine Oregon dollars have not been kind of just sit, sitting and wait. But we are really excited about this that we're bringing to you today because this is the program that will launch and be able to continue to get these dollars out into community moving forward. Overall, I think the community engagement is probably the place where we get most inspiration for this work. We, in partnership with Justice Raji and the Reimagine Oregon Steering Committee, we have met with dozens and dozens and dozens of community members, elected officials, small business owners, members of corporations and financial institution, nonprofit leaders, all of those who are contributing to economic development initiatives to truly allow for community input. So far on these grant guidelines, our rollout and implementation, we continue to do that work. Just last night, we were with a fantastic group of leaders who gave us so many insights and really shared with us, number one, that where we are at today, what we're presenting to you today is absolutely reflective of their goals. And they continue to give us insight around how we, how we work to get these dollars out into community. So we thank them for their time spent with us. Lastly, we are here today to bring that program and launch it. We've drafted the Reimagine Oregon Economic Opportunity Investment Fund Grand Guide, Grant Guidelines, excuse me, in collaboration with the incredible staff across this agency. I don't know that there's any individual who hasn't heard about or given insight or shared time with Vicky, Daniel, Trevor, or myself to really ensure that this, what we're bringing to you today is centered around community insight and community perspective in the best that we can bring. And so we look forward to your approval, if it makes sense for you all today, of these grant guidelines and this public launch of this fund this spring. Next slide. I'm going to hand it over to Vicky to really talk about the unique aspects of the program, and then I will come back at the end as we have some questions, Vicky.
Thank you, Chabree, and good afternoon, everyone. As Chabree mentioned, we have unique aspects of this program. I really want to highlight for all of us before getting into the guidelines. The first item you see here is the history. As Chabree mentioned, Reimagine Oregon has a unique history in that it began as a statewide initiative, and it's comprised of impactful leaders who are amplifying the voices of the community and bringing forth calls to action that are necessary for our communities to thrive and achieve vitality. It's our goal to listen to our community leadership, and it is because of the input from community that we've been able to draft grant guidelines and bring it to you today. The next uniqueness of the program is around our, our community engagement, as Chabree mentioned. So we continue to have several conversations with the community, several insights and input that is helpful in rolling out the program and making sure that this program is accessible to those most impacted by cannabis prohibition. The other unique aspect of the program is its flexibility in use. The use of the funds is flexible to allow for a wide variety of innovative and community-oriented proposals in accordance with the Portland City Code. The code allows the funds to be used to support neighborhood small businesses, especially women-owned and minority-owned businesses, including but not limited to business incubator programs, management training, and job training opportunities, and providing economic opportunity and education to communities disproportionately impacted by the cannabis prohibition. And, and last but not least, is of course, this opportunity to invest five million dollars to support small businesses that is aligned with our community's vision and advocacy efforts, especially in this first year where we've accumulated funds and are able to invest in community into a larger, in a larger way this year. Next slide. All right, so with that, we'll introduce the program guidelines, the rules and requirements for the program. Next slide. So to first summarize what our, our goals for impact is for this program is to really highlight the support to businesses. We want to ensure economic opportunity and capital are made increasingly available. We want to reconstruct and revitalize the Portland economy. We want businesses that are supporting entrepreneurs with scaling their business. We want to create multi-generational wealth opportunities for our community and meet the business needs for capital and growth. We also are focused on expanding assistance to and the resilience of businesses in need of economic support and increasing access to businesses and property ownership, real estate financing, and partnership with a focus on growing wealth more equitably via inclusive networks. Next slide. So with that, we have identified priority areas where funds can be used in a flexible and creative and innovative way that will be identified from the community and fall under the preferred priorities that you see before you. There are three priorities we are focused on. One is accelerating business growth and entrepreneurship. As you can see here, grants will start at five thousand and range up to three hundred thousand. We are hoping for proposals to demonstrate growth and scaling of business and strengthening the business. Examples of that can be seen with investment capital, business partnership, and networking opportunities. The second priority is around building community wealth and economic empowerment. Grants start between five thousand dollars and go up to three hundred thousand, and it is focused on promoting skills and assets for intergenerational and community wealth. Examples of that you'll see are financial inclusion and literacy, community-owned businesses, for example, co-ops. And the third priority is around creating anchor projects that enhance community engagement and collaboration. This is, is focused on space and place. The grants range from fifty thousand to seven hundred thousand, and it is focused on increasing economic opportunity for our community. Examples of this can be seen with housing development projects, property acquisition, and business hubs. Next slide. So for eligibility, we are looking at organizations that are for-profit businesses that are also nonprofit businesses that help strengthen the economic environment of our community and social service organizations working under a five oh one C three fiscal sponsor. These organizations will be located in the city of Portland, will be serving community in Portland as outlined by our city code. And the uses are not limited to, again, are flexible in the, in the realm or the lanes of what you see here. Business or program expansion efforts, hiring staff, consultants, or vendor support, organizational capacity and working capital products, equipment, and services. So we really want our community to think creatively about how to address economic opportunity and development efforts. Organizations that are ineligible will be businesses and organizations outside of the city of Portland. And uses that are not allowed for this, for this fund are projects that involve any direct political advocacy or of course, any personal use. These funds would not be allowed to be applied to. Next slide. So our hope is to receive creative, innovative proposals from our community, and the evaluation process will be led through the process you see here. First up is our Evaluation Committee. Our committee is comprised of community stakeholders and Prosper Portland staff who will make recommendations to Prosper Portland's Executive Director in preparation of award of grants by the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners. Uh, so uh, in our, our next slide coming up, I'll share the timeline for this. Um, and our hope is to, again, bring those recommendations to the Executive Director and have uh, the board review uh, our final recommendations, um, review it and, and uh, give us feedback and approval. The evaluation for criteria, while it is not limited to these things, it, it will include um, the impact to business growth and capacity to serve the community, impact to community disproportionately impacted by the cannabis prohibition, having a well-defined plan for business or program outcomes. And proposals uh, we are hoping will have a demonstration of financial feasibility and need for funding. Uh, that is what we will be looking at as some of our criteria points. Um, reporting, uh, we have uh, uh, identified that the reporting would be tailored to each project based on application uh, and be received on a regular basis. Prosper Portland's team will report back to the board and Reimagine Oregon Steering Committee annually on program outcomes and community impact. Next slide. Uh, so here is our timeline for uh, rolling out our grant fund. Um, in January, we, our staff was busy uh, collaborating across our community um, to help finalize uh, the Reimagine Fund Grant Guidelines that you see before you. Uh, this month, we are here bringing it to you as a board action request. Um, while still um, engaging with our community um, and keeping communication open um, to understand the needs of our community. Uh, from February to early March, um, we will continue having those meetings. We will continue listening for the vision um, from community and having that inform um, how we evaluate and how we uh, focus our evaluation and tier our evaluation um, with our priority areas. Um, in March, um, the grant application we hope will launch on our website. And uh, we will hold application information sessions. So our community understands what is being made available, understands uh, how to put forward strong proposals and can access and have no barriers to um, completing applications. Um, and then at the end of April, uh, the grant program would be open for a month. At the end of April till May, we will meet and uh, our evaluation committee will review applications um, and evaluate applications and prepare applications to be reviewed uh, by the board. Uh, final recommendations from the applications should be re- reviewed by the board. And then May and June, that is when we would announce award uh, recipients um, and disperse funds. Next slide. So here you'll see um, a summary of some of the uniqueness of this program and um, this, what is allotted to us for this fiscal year, but what we hope will continue in future years. For this year, we have five million in awards available. Uh, for subsequent years, we're looking at between one point two and one point five million uh, per fiscal year. The grant award ranges, once again, will be between five thousand and three hundred thousand for the first two priorities that we mentioned. Um, and the grant award range for anchor projects, that's that third priority, will be between fifty thousand and some seven hundred thousand uh, per proposal. Down here on the slide, you'll also see uh, some details about how we hope to disperse um, payments. Um, whether it be impartial payments um, or a lump sum uh, for gifts. Um, focus on the second priority, uh, focus on building community wealth and economic empowerment. Community will have opportunity to apply for multi-year grants of over and up to three years. Um, and uh, those grant dispersments are tied to reporting um, to understand what the needs are, how things may have changed, or um, how successful um, the program is um, having uh, how successful the impact of the funds are on the business or the organizations. Next slide. And with that, I will uh, pass it back to Chabri to open us up for any questions.
Thank you so much, Vicky. Um, and uh, before I, before I uh, bring questions and then uh, have Justice Raji, our invited um, uh, partner, uh, share a few words. I, I think it's important to note, just over the past uh, two days, we've been able to um, deeply engage in focus groups with community leaders and the Steering Committee. And I just wanted to bring some of the um, some of their voices into the space here. Justice will bring his voice and, and, and certainly the, the perspective from the Steering Committee. But some of the things that we heard them say, hopefully you see and feel that are reflected in the, the guidelines. In particular, as we talked about accessibility to capital, the Steering Committee let us know that many businesses within the black community and within the community here in Portland, uh, the, the capital comes from personal savings, family and friends. And so oftentimes, it takes longer to scale businesses at the same rate as other counterparts. And so that is one of the important reasons for a program like Reimagine Oregon to launch and to actually be reflective of what community is asking for. They're asking us to ensure that people have enough funds to actually achieve their business development or expansion goals. So not, you know, a thousand dollars or five, but really truly thinking what do they need to scale? We heard from a community, um, a small business owner, actually a, a black developer uh, last night. And she told us that when she was granted uh, through another program, a fifty thousand dollar grant, it allowed her the moment to really think about how she could scale her business in ways that she hadn't even considered in the past. And one of the first things she did was hired someone who then helped her get um, so many other grants and, and uh, federal uh, funds to actually be able to do and move her development work forward. And she recognized that she wouldn't have even thought about that had she not had that cash infusion. Uh, and so we're really excited about things like that. We heard folks say um, plans like the Pulp People's Plan and the State of Black Oregon from uh, Urban League and um, the Coalition Communities of Color um, Wealth uh, Gap Analysis Report. These things absolutely help us set up a great framework to utilize as we consider evaluating. And our team, Daniel Tay in particular, has already done that, and that is what will be imbued both into the application questions and our evaluation metrics. We also heard that um, these uh, the grants and, and the folks that we're working with should answer the question, how will this award uh, impact your business and as a result, impact our community in a positive way? So they're really hoping that these funds leverage uh, more than just kind of instant access to capital for uh, businesses, but really truly invest larger in the Portland community. Um, lastly, folks talked about building collaboration and connection opportunities between communities. So you will see that as a part of the Reimagine Oregon program, we will continue to do that in partnership with Justice and others. And uh, one of the things I think was quite fabulous and, and, and great to hear was the connection to multi-generational understanding of how we do this work. There was a specific call out to uh, inviting Gen Z in, recognizing that they um, were the ones who were on the front lines in the midst of protesting and amplifying voices so that policies could be changed to bring about an allocation like this and that their ideas, their tenacity will absolutely be critical in moving this work forward. And so, it's deep appreciation to community for truly looking at not just what we have in front of us, but thinking about generations moving forward and how we will impact uh, those through this fund. And to that end, um, I invite Justice Raji to share more on uh, Reimagine Oregon Steering Committee perspective.
Please, uh, Justice Raji, pronouns E M. I'm Director of the Reimagine Oregon Project, and uh, thank you for having me here today. Um, I think I wanna start with that, um, you know, the, and so. The, the, the core idea that um, the, the project and the leaders and those involved tried to do at the moment and, and as we were in the midst of what we were experiencing, um, starting in twenty twenty, but going through, and, and I know we as a community have not really fully healed, all of us, um, was that a commitment is not something you can do. Hardship. Future where we can move in another direction, and we wanna make proactive decisions to improve our condition. And we. That goes on, and you know, it's a requirement to be public. Um, that we can then work in partnership and build something and having those people in place. Um, landing to the place that we're at now, uh, where we have um, from the levels that are needed for something, at least in my experience, for something like this to be effective, we have director level guidance, we have programmatic level leadership, we have the, the operational coordinator folks that are in play, admin folks, so that um, whatever happens with me as a person that currently sits in this seat to try to be liaison and the connection point with community, that the infrastructure is there at the city to follow through on what it said it wants to do, right? And we all benefit if our city um, does great work. It not only benefits the city of Portland, but in, as we know, the uh, value that our city places and uh, plays in our state, it benefits us all when the city of Portland is effective in following its mission and moving forward in the ways and the investments that it wants to make. So, say that say, um, I'm excited, the steps that we've taken. Um, I'm um, empowered uh, by, you know, the infrastructure that's being built, um, the commitments that are being made to, to get this stood up, ready to go and in action. And then the commitment to make sure that we maintain, um, you know, I as a community member can maintain my, my side of this of connecting community, making sure we have accountability and voice. And then um, a counterpart that the city can do the legwork. So all of the people who maybe have not been able to participate in this will have, you know, those businesses, those folks trying to do different economic development opportunity initiatives can put their brains to work and say, this may be a resource for me to do something great here in Portland. Um, so I'm really excited that where we're at, and I'm hoping, I'm looking forward to getting past this step so we can get to that step where folks can bring their great ideas to bear. And um, hopefully we can, you know, again, build a, a learning environment and for the city, but also, most importantly, be effective in, in what we have in front of us and do so in a way that is accountable uh, and traceable and all the, all the things are in place so that we can do great work. So, those are my thoughts, and I thank you for having me.
Thank you so much, Justice. And with that, uh, Chair Cruz and Commissioners, if you have any questions, we would love to answer them now.
Great, thanks very much to all of you for uh, the great presentation, and it's an exciting uh, moment that we're in, I think. Um, would anybody like to start off with any questions or comments? Anyone on our board?
I would just like to say thank you for the great work that you all have started, and I look forward to what's uh, and a little bit excited about what's ahead.
Any, any other comments? I would just say, I'm, I'm, I too, I'm looking forward to uh, hearing more about the specific requests and kind of the, the exciting ideas that folks have. And I think that'll be, be terrific, so I look forward to hearing about that. Oh, yes.
I just wanted to note, it's a really quick timeline, and I, I wanna appreciate all the work that went into making this happen so quickly and also to roll out the funds on such an expedited timeline. So thank you to everyone that's put in that time and to doing it in a really thoughtful and planned-out manner. So, looking forward to seeing more.
Thank you.
Also looking forward to hearing the case studies from people who are impacted in a positive way, you know, uh, a, a future meeting and understand how it can be transformational. So, uh, yeah, look, looking forward to, to capturing those insights and, and learning from, from how it affects people.
Thank you. We look forward to bringing you back, not only those who we uh, suggest with regard to funding, but also the reports on, on the impact. Um, folks are already ideating about what that could look like, and so, um, we're all, we will all collectively look forward to that time, for sure.
Okay, great. Well, uh, well, thanks to all of you, and uh, if we have no more comments, then uh, would somebody like to make a motion to approve Resolution number seven five two two, adopting the new guidelines?
Motion to approve.
Motion second.
Great, thank you. Alright, all those in favor? Alright.
Aye.
Great, passes unanimously. Alright, thank you very much. And, and uh, Justice, thanks for joining us today.
Uh, thank you for having me, and appreciate it very much, so, thank you.
Right. Okay, well, um, if that's all we have today, it's a short meeting, uh, then uh, we are now adjourned. So thanks to everybody and happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you all. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Thank you.